Thank you for coming out. So, my name is Chris Hartling. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen. The other guys that are here, Bob Hogan, Joe Morandi, Jimmy Tiggas, and Mike Runyon. I have to give my credit. This was my idea. The thought process was that what we're going to talk about is an important subject. We knew there would be a lot of interest and a lot of people that want to be heard on the issue. So, rather than try to incorporate this into a meeting, Mike thought and suggested, and the rest of us agreed, that this would be a good way to approach it. So, hopefully, we'll get a lot of ideas out. Many of you or as many of you as possible get a chance to express yourselves, and then we'll take it from here. This is, this matter, which I don't have to explain what it is because we all know what it is, is on the agenda for Monday night's meeting of the Board of Selectmen. So, we're going to do the listening this evening. So, our mission here is to get out of the way, take notes, listen to what you folks have to say, and then, along with the information that we're going to be receiving from different, different entities, like, for example, we're getting information from our legal team. We have somebody here who's a member of the Burlington Historical Commission that we're going to hear from briefly, and we are working in close concert with the Planning Board. And just to back up, that's actually how this whole issue or this whole matter came to our attention. We were notified via letter by the Planning Board that at a meeting they discussed the, what is, what's going on at Seventeenth Sears Street, and they voted, they took a 6-0 vote, one person wasn't there, and they made the suggestion to the Board of Selectmen that we explore the possibility of the town purchasing this house. So, again, our goal tonight is to do the listening. We're really not going to be pontificating on anything. We're not going to be giving opinions. This is about the crowd, so you folks talk, we'll listen, we'll do our homework, and then we'll meet about it on Monday night. So, I do, I want to thank Rich Hosford for being here. So, I want to start things off if we can, a member of your neighborhood, a shy member of your neighborhood, has approached and has requested that he be given an opportunity to sort of sum things up, to at least speak on behalf of a group of you. The thing I would encourage tonight would be, we want to get as many viewpoints out there as possible. So, we want to avoid the idea of one person after another. Basically, you're reiterating the same thing. I think we should be encouraging folks to have ideas different and have ideas possibly be an expansion on the idea that was expressed before you. So, if we can keep it to that philosophy, we have the place for a while, we all paid for it, so we might as well hang out here, and we're here to listen. So, with that said, we'll start with Mr. Murphy, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. I'm going to was standing here, so I don't give anybody my back. Charlie Murphy, Nineteenth Sears Street. First of all, thank you, the Selectmen. We appreciate you pulling this meeting together, Michael. Thank you. I would suggest that this turnout sends a pretty good message to the town leaders, that this is an issue that people feel passionate about. And let me start by saying, I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody. I'm here just to sort of set the table for folks tonight with their, with their thoughts and concerns, and more importantly, you're going to hear from folks who aren't from the neighborhood. When you said I'm on behalf of a certain group, this is a town issue. This is not a neighborhood issue, for reasons that you're going to hear. A lot of you know what I'm about to go through, but I want to review it so everybody's on the same page. I just got off the phone with Glenn, who owns Seventeenth Sears Street, just to clarify and make sure we're on the same page, and I told him I'm coming to this meeting, that I was going to share certain things. So, back, call it five or six weeks ago, the Gartards put the property on the, on the market, had an open house. They got two offers. One was for, from a family, I think a couple, for somewhere less than mid-sevens, and then they got another offer from a developer, and I don't know who the developer is, to be honest with you, but it's a developer that makes or builds and runs daycare educational type facilities. For, I don't know the exact numbers, I haven't seen, I'm told mid-eight. It was about $120,000 vig between the family and the developer. So, they actually had Nan and myself over for, for a meeting because they wanted to tell us what was going on because they felt they're in a pickle, because they do not want to sell to a developer, trust me. But at the same time, that's a lot of money, and they're, they're trying to figure out how they can get out of this. They came up with the idea of, gee, do you think the town would buy? And I was just talking to Michael about this. My, my initial reaction was, well, maybe, however, there has to be a reason for the town to buy it. Because I, you know, I get it, you guys on the Board of Selectmen, you've got the purse strings, and you can't just throw around 800 grand with no plan. And that was pitched in Joe, Joe and Pepper represented them for a period of time, they were his longtime lawyer, but he doesn't anymore because of the Planning Board and those issues. But that idea was kind of kicked around town, and it came back to us, the proponent or the opponents of a daycare facility, that the Board of Selectmen weren't necessarily willing to just write a check and keep the building there. And as objective as I can be, because I live 30 feet from their backyard or their backdoor, I get that. I don't disagree with that sentiment. I'd wish you'd do that, because then, I'm not, we're not on an island, because that's what we're doing, the daycare next door is top, behind us, and the Clonan Building on the other side of us. But I, I get the fact that you can't necessarily do that. So, and Glenn and Maureen know that. So, the situation Glenn and Maureen are in is that they're buying, they're moving, they're retired, they're moving to May. They have a closing in April on a house up in Kankwit, and they need funds to go back and forth. The, the one, I think, possibility, and I think that's why we're here, is to ask the five of you to consider this, and I understand you're not taking a vote tonight or anything else, but this is to consider it, is to purchase the property. As everybody knows, the only reason the developers even looking at this land is because it's 33,000 square feet. It's big enough to be able to put the daycare center with setbacks and parking and whatnot. 20,000 square foot lot like most of us have would not be bigger. Town purchase the property, get Al Nelson out there to draw a lot line, and lop off 10,000 square feet, that would be contiguous to the town hall parking lot. Town owns that 10,000 square feet to do with parking or egress and down the road or where the case may be. And then you simply sell the house as a 23,000 square foot lot. Now, that is not a difficult undertaking, it's actually quite simple. Draw the deed up, or draw the lot line, draw up a deed, go to the registry, record it, and that 10,000 is separated from the 33,000 square foot lot. Sell the house for 23,000, so just doing rough numbers, if you're able to buy, and I'm not saying these aren't the numbers, but it's going to be somewhere in the ballpark of 775,000 for the town to purchase the property. Lop off the 10,000, and then sell the house for, I'm sure we got some realtors in here, but 700,000, I don't think that's a crazy number. And it costs the town, so at the end of the day, the town is paying $75,000 to maintain the center of town, to maintain the, the nature, to prevent the safety issues that are clearly going to present themselves, and I'm sure you're going to hear about tonight, to avoid what is in essence a commercial building in a residential neighborhood. I would argue, and again, being as objective as I can, and Mr. Hartling asked me this two weeks ago, if I'd feel this way if I lived in another part of town, and I said emphatically, yes. Because it's, part of the Board's job, I would suggest, is doing things like this and protecting the integrity of the town, the town center in residential neighborhoods. And here's an opportunity for $75,000, plus or minus, to be able to do that. I get it, 800,000, 775, out the door, not having anything else to do, I get that. And you said no to that, I can't argue with that. But to be able to do it in, for this number, for what is relatively small number when you look at the, the free cash that the town's sitting on, 11.2 million or whatever the case may be, this is not an onerous number. And again, on behalf of myself, on behalf of my wife, I would ask you to consider that. In terms of timing, the Gartards are willing to wait. I think they're willing to wait till Tuesday, and I say that because you guys have a meeting on Monday, and I think that would be the opportunity to broach it, vote on it, and then give the authority to the town administrator to sign a PNS contingent upon, and they get its contingent upon town meeting, releasing the funds in May, and they understand that. But I would suggest that would be the opportunity to do that. So, with that, I, again, we appreciate your time, appreciate consideration, and we, I hope, again, hope that you do seriously consider paying what would amount to less than $100,000 to keep that neighborhood, to keep the center of town intact. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Charlie. Nan, he does speak for both of you, correct? Do we, I just want to make sure that, okay. So, just to touch on a point, and I think Charlie summed it up pretty well, it took him a lot longer to say that to me than it did to you, and there were a few more raisings of the voice, might have been some expletives laced into the conversation as well, but a couple of things, just to touch on a point that he made. So, what we are doing in preparation for our meeting Monday night, we have sought the opinion of legal counsel as far as what we're allowed to do, how a process like the one outlined by Charlie would go, and we will have that in time for myself and the guys to process and ask questions on prior to Monday's meeting. So, we'll have a good legal background as far as what would be a potential process and what we're even allowed to do. The, we checked with the building department, we're going to be getting an opinion from them as well, from the standpoint of getting, getting some of the details around how the lot could potentially be cut up and what's required for setbacks and things like that. Another group that we checked with is the Burlington Historical Commission. It's an old house, and we thought it would be a good idea to check with them and offer them the opportunity to maybe perhaps speak on what their role could potentially be in a process like this, and what their role would be if nothing happened from here. So, Mike, if I could pass you the mic. Mike Trudeau of the Burlington Historical Commission.
We really have very limited powers. I know that, could we put a delay in the case of a demolition being asked for? Yes, under certain circumstances, and it's a checklist, so we can go through this. First, demolition permit application has to be made. We can't do anything until that happens. If the building is 100 years or older, we're notified automatically by the building department. This obviously qualifies. Within 15 days of the notification, the commission meets by themselves to determine the historical significance. Historical significance is anything we say it is. If it's just an old building, we'd probably pass. This, with this much enthusiasm, we would probably go on to the next step. Significance is found, building owner or the permit applicant and the inspector of buildings is notified. No building, no demolition permit can be issued at that time. Then, within 20 days, a public hearing is held, and this is the important part. A hearing is held, this would be advertised in the media, all the abutters would be notified by mail, all interested parties would be notified by mail. Presentations would be made for or against this demolition delay. Any interested parties would be heard within reason, couldn't go on for two or three days listening. The Historical Commission then votes the demolition delay up or down, and within seven days, the commission notifies the inspector of buildings in writing. Without this written notification, the permit would be issued. With a written notification, a delay of up to six months may be imposed in order to find other remedies short of demolition. After six months, after a six-month delay, the commission no longer has jurisdiction. And we found this out bitterly with the Proudie House over on Proudie Road. That initial demolition permit application had expired, a new, new person had purchased the building, put in for a new demolition permit, and we were not allowed to vote on it again. After six months, we're done. This is it. This is our sole total power at this time. We can hold the hearings, determine historical, societal, architectural, or political significance, and that is whatever we say it is. And if we find it, we can vote a six-month delay with no extension to look for other remedies. Yes, sir?
Just clarify that that's only after somebody purchases it and decides not to hear it, is that right?
No, as I said right up front, we can't do anything until a demolition permit is applied for. Until then, we have no power. We can talk, we can educate people, we can put out information about the past of this building, but we have no juris, we cannot take the property. With our current budget, from what Charlie was saying, we would need our budget for the next 78 to 80 years to purchase this property. The Community Preservation Act is coming up. Once that goes through, we may have a larger budget, but it is not in place yet. So, right now, this is it. We can put on a six-month demolition delay, and that's all, yes?
Can the current property apply for any legal, stop it from being sold to develop? Can the current motion apply for any historic house to be made a historic building, so it would prevent it being sold to develop?
You're talking about the registry of historic buildings? That is...
Did everybody get the question?
Okay.
So, the question was, can the current owners do something or apply for something or file for some sort of a...
Historical designation.
Historical designation, so that, to limit what could be done with the house?
Okay. Being put onto the registry of historic buildings does not limit the powers of a private property owner. They can still do with a building as they please. We have two buildings in town which are on the historic register, which are public buildings, that is the museum on Bedford Street and the West School over on the corner of Francis Wyman Road. Those we have strict rules about. However, the UCC Church, for example, is also on the list, and the Francis Wyman House. We have nothing to say about how those buildings are maintained or used. That designation does not give us any power. There's, there's nothing in the town bylaws except for the demolition delay that we have.
Mike, thanks so much for joining us this evening. So, I did, yes, sir?
This one, Charlie spelled out the different scenarios nicely, but one thing that wasn't in the mix was that he had said, talked about a cost, you know, that purchase of the lane up to 10,000 square feet, you know, whatever the cost, 50,000, 70,000, whatever that cost was, to compare us to others, we need to look at the other side of it as well. If that, if this goes forward and it gets to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board denies it, most likely you end up in court. And so, it's not going to be zero cost on that side. You've got to consider the fact that it could be 50, 75,000 dollars to defend it. So, you know, that needs to be considered in the whole mix, as to see whether it's a wise decision on the town to count it or not. You know, you, you spend that money, you acquire some property that stops this from happening, and you're, if you're able to hold into the future for possible parking or needs in the center of town, or it ends up in court, we end up fighting a battle, we spend the money anyways, and maybe we lose, and maybe they continue to do it, you know, so.
So, Joe, is your, first of all, thank you for that. Is your point, does that apply under the assumption that the house was acquired by the, by the developer? You're saying any sort of a legal situation would occur after they purchased the house?
Permitting process.
For the permitting process.
They bought it and they denied, not saying that, it wouldn't be safe, but clearly the Planning Board has been fairly unanimous with their feeling that the property should be pursued for acquisition purposes by the town. So, I would assume that the Board would feel the same way if a daycare were being permitted there. So, if it were denied, it would inevitably wind up in a legal battle, and the town would have to fight anyway, so.
So, Joe, I don't believe we included that we all had an opportunity to forward questions to the legal team. I'm fairly certain that that was not one of them. So, I'll go back, or we'll go back now, get an idea, we won't have it by Monday night, but we'll get an idea as to how that whole process would go.
First to add is, just so that we can, it's not necessarily if we decide not to move forward, it doesn't cost a...
Joe.
If we decide not to move forward as a town for the acquisition, it could cost the town money anyways.
Okay.
We could still be dealing with a daycare.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Peter Paul, Historical Commission, following Joe's logic about cost avoidance and Mike's explanation, if the property were insulted and the developer would have purchased it, and it would go through the exercise of applying for demolition permit, and the Historical Commission were to support the town purchasing the property, instead of talking about buying it for whatever they were offering, now say another something, Charlie?
Yes.
You're looking at what the developer paid for, which is 800-something thousand, plus their design costs and development costs that they put into it, plus any delays that we caused them. So, if I can buy it now, I'll buy it later for another 150, 20,000 dollars more. So, there's another cost avoidance factor there.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir? The one thing I have to ask is, where, we should have some sort of a record of who spoke. So, if you don't mind, before you say something, just quickly identify yourself. Thank you.
And the address.
And the address, and...
The address of my address, because we can't hear anything back yet.
I only want you to hear me, Carol, so it's...
Conservation Commission, maybe...
Good.
Yeah. Hello? Could the Conservation Commission?
Can we show any, sir?
So, the question is, could the Conservation Commission buy the property? This is off the cuff. Right now, no, they couldn't. Something that is being discussed is something that was alluded to by Mike. There is a movement afoot to have the Community Preservation Act part of our, part of what we have here in Burlington. Anybody that knows more about this than me is welcome to talk on it, by the way. Otherwise, you're stuck with me. So, the idea, no, so the idea is, the idea would be, I believe the way the Community Preservation Act works is, a town agrees to set aside a certain amount of money every year, and I believe it's a percentage of their budget, or it's a fixed dollar amount, I'm not sure which one it is. And they are, basically, they commit to, as a town or as a community, put that money aside every year. The state, not necessarily in every case, but the state matches or can match up to a certain percent of a town or a community's investment. You're waving your finger at me, John, do you want to? No? Okay. So, the idea is, we throw some money into the pot, the state possibly throws some money into the pot, we can then use that money as a town or as a community to purchase things or to fund projects. Typically, these projects would have some environmental appeal, whether it's a walking path, or whether it's save a 400-year-old tree, or whether it is purchase a historic building. So, these are some of the things. So, I guess, to my knowledge, we, they can't just pull money out of their budget and purchase it, but if a Community Preservation Act were to be instituted here, that is, this is something that theoretically they could do with the money.
I meant just the strip of land.
The strip of land.
Donate for 10,000 square feet to do, you know, conservation.
Say it again? Yeah, I, I don't know if it qualifies for any of that. I, I'm not racing ahead and thinking, speaking for myself personally, I haven't got to, I don't think I'm qualified to go ahead and say this is what we should do with it. To me, I just want to listen to as many ideas as possible, have us figure out if this is something that we want to send to town meeting, which is ultimately what would have to happen. If we were to enter into a purchase and sale, that purchase and sale would be subject to the approval of town meeting, which would happen in May. So, I'm sorry I went off on that Community Preservation Act tangent, I think it's going to be on your 2020 townwide ballot, but now you all know a little more than you did before you came, so, yes?
While we answer that question.
Okay. You couldn't raise your hand before I tried it?
Well, I didn't understand the question initially. What typically would happen if, and I'm speaking as a former Planning Board member now, what would typically happen is, the developer would go before the different boards, they could go in front of the Conservation Commission, and they could request through the Planning Board that the developer donate the 10,000 square feet to the town as conservation. That won't happen, so it's, it's not automatic, and it would be up to the developer, would have to agree to that. And I don't think somebody who's trying to develop the property for commercial use would want to give up the 10,000 square feet.
I meant the homeowner now.
Oh, the homeowner now?
The person that owns the house now donated or sells 10,000 square feet to the conservation.
Well, they don't have to do it to the conservation, they just have to apply...
The town.
They, they don't have, they can do that now. They can, they can go before the town, get a lawyer, say, subdivide the property and just, and just sell that parcel to the town, and then it's just a rubber stamp by the Planning Board.
And then the cost is small. The cost is small.
So, my, my guess is that would have happened already, and I'd personally like to try to avoid making the people who own the house now really any part of the topic of the conversation.
Just to respond to that, yeah, that makes sense, but the timing of the session now, that should be sale, that's feasible, but they have to move, like I said, to the head and...
Yeah.
But the idea is...
So, there was somebody that I've spoken a lot with over the last week regarding this issue, and if he or she wants to speak, I'd like to give them the opportunity to do it first. Since that they haven't raised their hand, I would open it to the floor. Does anybody have something new to contribute? Yes?
Hi, I'm Renee Waxman. I'm at 15 Sears Street, I'm on the other side of the property that's being considered for this development. I have a question, as naive as it may sound, or as out of the box as it may sound, you spoke about a family that was interested in purchasing that property but was not meeting the purchase point that the sellers were interested in. What opportunity, if any, exists for that house to be sold to those folks that were interested and for the difference to be paid for by the town? I don't know, I'm just putting it out there as a potential. Is that an option? Because what are we talking about, $120,000 difference? Right? So, and clearly, as in a butter to the property, I have a big concern living on Sears Street about safety, about traffic, about the traffic we're already going to have as a result of the new facility going in over where Building 19 used to be, though I will benefit from that, I'm sure, it will get used by me. But it's already a cut-through street. I cross the street to get to the sidewalk to walk my dog, and sometimes we put ourselves at risk in doing that. And so, I'm very concerned about the traffic, and I know that that's been said in emails, it hasn't been said here yet, but I am very concerned about safety and the traffic and the increase in traffic that's going to occur on Sears Street, and that's probably my number one issue. Though, to expect to have a blacktop parking lot as my next-door neighbor is not exactly what I would prefer either, but I understand that that may not be a consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else want to offer an opinion or some feelings as to why the Board of Selectmen would consider entering into a purchase and sale, subject to town meeting? Yes?
I'm Amy Johnson, I'm at 43 Skelton Road. My question is about the impact on first responder times, because it would be kind of situated right in the middle of the fire department and the police department. If the... If the proposed daycare facility creates excessive amount of traffic, because say they can have thirty, forty kids in their facility and you have most parents coming and going at the same time, what happens if there's an emergency and the fire department can't get out because traffic is backed up waiting for parking spots? What happens if the police department can't get out? What do they then do? Do they have to write that into their proposal? Do they have to, you know, have a smaller parking lot, have a smaller facility because of the space in the area? How does that get worked around? And then who do we speak to if that's not something that they have to consider?
So, just so that we can save everybody some time, if there's anybody in this room that thinks it's a good idea for a daycare to be located in that location, can you raise your hand now? So none of us think that's a good idea, including us. So the question here, again, is not whether or not we think it's a good idea. The question is, we, because we're, this, everybody in this room, we are not the only people that pay taxes in Burlington. So as Charlie mentioned, this is not a neighborhood issue, this is a town issue. And the way, again, speaking only for myself, the way I try to look at things is, as easy as it would be for me to only care about what helps and/or hurts me, I try to think about the big picture and what is best for everybody in town. So I think the other four guys do the same thing. So I think some of what I'm hoping to hear is reasons and concepts as to why it's a good idea for everybody and not just why it's a good idea for the area over here. And I don't mean any disrespect by saying that. I'm legitimately asking, sincerely asking for opinions and views as to why this makes sense for the whole town. For example, personally, I'm, and again, just speaking for myself, I don't think we do a great job of preserving old stuff in Burlington. And we are never going to be Lexington, we're not Lexington now, we're never going to be a town like Lexington or a town like Concord or even a town like Bedford. There are towns around us that do a good job of preserving their old stuff. I don't necessarily think that we have as much old stuff as some of these old towns, but I certainly don't think we do as good a job as other communities as preserving that stuff. In Lexington, you have to apply for a series of permits before you can even cut down a tree that is a certain age. So I think for me, that's something that I'm taking into consideration as I formulate an opinion as to what, if any, action I would wanna take. So, yes, Steve?
Steve, this doesn't seem to work if I go too far.
Did everybody hear?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of what you said made sense. You asked who thinks that building a daycare center makes, you know, makes sense or who wants that to happen? I mentioned you said nobody here really does want that to happen. What does a town have to gain? What do the townspeople have to gain in a daycare center going there? I would say nothing. I mean, that's, that's a business. Whoever owns that business will have all the gain. But land is a commodity. Where that land is situated, right in our town common, is a commodity for everybody in the town. I venture to say that if we did go forward with a purchase and sale agreement, it's not something that the town has to decide what we're gonna do right away that buys us time to figure out what we actually wanna do with that property. Obviously, we wanna, we wanna get our money back. Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, but doing it the right way. Right now, time is on our side, okay? These people need to move. They need to retire, they need to move, make. They need to, they need to sell the house. So we need to figure out real quick whether or not we wanna do this as a town, not just as a neighborhood. I know there are people in here from different neighborhoods. To me, that's what makes the most sense. Where the land is situated is a commodity for everybody in the town. The gentleman right there from the historical, made a lot of sense with his statement. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. If this is whatever kind of weird, crazy law we have that a daycare center can go into that area, what happens when that daycare center goes on the ground? There's a kid to care in every town, on every block. There's a million of them. Think we're building one right now down on Cambridge Street. What happens when that goes on? What if another daycare doesn't wanna go? We have a commercial building sitting there, and we're hoping that somebody spends their outer money to buy a commercial building to convert it into a home, when there was already a nice home there, a historical feature of this town that we could have saved. I don't want us ten, fifteen years from now to say, damn, I wish I would have bought that. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. So Steve, just to piggyback on something that you said, regardless of what happens Monday evening, this will ultimately be decided by town meeting. I don't know if this is a two-thirds vote type of a thing. It is. So this would require a two-thirds vote at town meeting, which equates to somewhere between sixty and seventy people, depending on attendance. So that is the ultimate determining factor, what that body decides to do. Regardless of, again, these five people say, regardless of what these five people say on Monday night, that's when and where the decision will actually be made on, as to whether or not the property is purchased. Yes, sir?
Mader Sufferdini, I'm at Five Briarwood Lane. There are a number of issues that certainly would contribute to the benefit of the entire community. We touched upon it in terms of the historical perspective. Certainly, the fact that, that there is a finite amount of land remaining in the town and it would behoove the town to purchase whatever is available, particularly up in the area where we are, for expansion of parking lots and other reasons. But our neighbor touched upon the issue of safety, and that is, first and foremost, I think, in terms of the location of the town and how it's gonna benefit everybody. Because, you know, time is of the essence, and I think that it's sort of a ticking clock now going on regarding the possibility of a very serious accident occurring up in that area. We see with the police department, you know, they have limited parking there. Whenever they run programs, there are cars parked in the streets, they park in the various town lots, they park in the neighborhood. Certainly, the programs that the library runs each week, there are numerous cars that just can't fit in that parking lot. They're parking on the street and on Sears Street, on Briarwood Lane, and we certainly know, you know, other times during the year where there's a significant amount of traffic that's coming up and down both Sears Street and Briarwood Lane and Theodore Circle and Sleeper. So cars are using those roads as cut-throughs to go from one part of town to the other. And I think that there is a possibility of very serious accident with children who are using the library, who are walking out there, and we see, and I see a number of neighbors that are just out walking their dogs, they're walking their children, they're using it as a walking path, which is great, but the pedestrian traffic has increased substantially and the vehicular traffic has increased substantially also. And by putting a commercial piece of property in there, that's going to bring in a number of cars, that's gonna expand that problem. And I just think that it's a real risk to have the community accept that kind of scenario where down the road, I think there's a possibility of a very serious accident. So aside from the other things that were mentioned, I think that's something that the town father should take into serious consideration in terms of explaining the position to the town, to the town meeting, so that they understand that it's just not a matter of, you know, the neighbors don't want a daycare in there. There are a number of legitimate reasons why we don't want a daycare in there. We're not opposed to daycare. I was a superintendent of schools, I certainly support schools, you know, all the time, but that is a very risky area to have any kind of a program like that. So that's my two cents.
You know, just, just, most people in here probably know, I'm between the planning board of selection fifteen years, almost fifteen on the planning board. I pretty much put an awful lot of years into the town as public servant, as an official. And during that period of time, I considered myself a historian in the town. I don't, I make decisions based on what I feel, that when I leave this office, I'm gonna leave this town in better shape when I leave than it was when I came here. And I feel it incumbent on, on town officials to acknowledge and value the history of the town. We have, right on our flag, it says, we have rich history, right? We have rich history in the town. We probably have as rich a history in this town as Lexington does of theirs, only unfortunately we don't have as many buildings. So every time one of those is taken down, we lose a piece of the history in this town. I wouldn't consider myself a prominent historian if I were allowed that to happen while I was, while I was in the range of the town. So that's one reason right there. Number two, we have in front of the planning board right now, they want to pay the front of the human services building because it's going to have parking in the center of town. They want to pay for the grants from the human services building. So it's supposed to be right there, we need parking in the, in the center of town. We could accomplish that as well by, you know, ten thousand square feet, a quarter acre parkage that we didn't have before. Anyone who's gone by the library on a regular basis seems that you've gotta, you know, these cars, people in life, they can park on Sears Street. I mean, that's crazy, it's not a parking. When the police have an event over at the police station, they're parked all over the street, they're parked everywhere, they're parked down Briarwood Lane, they need parking. So, you know, at least a quarter acre parkage, you know, accomplish something towards that end as well. But I think the big picture is, there are certain things that make towns desirable to live, and one of them is a beautiful center of town. Another one is the history of town, and a town, you can tell when you go into a town, the towns that value their history. And those tend to be the ones that people want to live in. And what happens when people want to live in these towns? You're able to sell your house for more money when you go to town. So the house values maintain and rip and rise. We're talking about a piece of real estate that the town can purchase. We're not talking about a stock or a bar, a stock that could go to zero tomorrow. I'm gonna tell you a story when I was first on the board of selection. I made a pitch because there was a nineteen fifty bundle that was on the market right next to our museum, our historic museum, and it was right between our historic museum and our historic cemetery in the center of town, which by the way, has this much parking, zero parking. So the property came up on the market, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars at the time. I pitched the rest of the board of selection, okay, we purchased this historic bundle, you know, stone fireplace and whatnot, but behind that is, is, it's a half acre land. We could, we can park and have access right there to parking for us, for our cemetery, people wanna visit that because it's historic, and for our museum. Board of selection felt, you know, in their wisdom that they didn't wanna move forward without purchase. Well, every one of those people you asked today knows they make a mistake. They know they make a mistake. It's real estate, it's private value. Number two, when the outpouring of townspeople came forward, once they saw that thing taken down and they saw condos being put up there, people were out there, right? This is the same thing here. You think the town, you've got this many people in this room right now, you see that being taken down, and that, you won't see people coming out of the woodwork that are saying, how could you allow that to happen? And these are the things that public officials, we have to understand. You know, like I said, certain things bring value to our town. Schools, beautiful centers of town, history, all of those things need to be preserved by the town officials. When you take it over to represent a town, that's how you represent a town the right way. And it's not the neighborhood, it's the town that you represent your house. Everybody's value of their house in their town. You take that historic property down, the next thing you know, you know, a number of weeks, there was a big battle with the Grand View Farm years ago, right? It was just a, a small group that said, this, this can't be taken down. Can you imagine if that was taken down, what it would have done to the center of our town? Right? So the town, once the town saw it, and it was nothing short of us literally making signs and holding signs up, you know, everybody that was involved in that whole process. When the town saw it, they, they got behind it. The next thing you know, even the board of selection, there weren't the votes to save that at the beginning when it started, or you know it. By the end of that, there were the votes of the board of selection to save that because they saw the care of these things. So it's not a question of just making your own decision for yourself, if you feel this town is, I think we were just certified at eleven and a half million dollar free cash. That means we probably got almost forty million dollars free cash. Not that we need to spend that free cash, you're purchasing real estate, and you could turn around and sell that real estate tomorrow for at least as much, if not more. When property comes up in the center of your town, you acquire. That's what smart towns do. You look around here, ready, all these towns that didn't have centers of town, they're trying to acquire properties in the center of the town. So you have to take advantage of the domain to do that. We have a situation right now where we get married, walk in and purchase. Acquire it, control it, figure out if we have needs for it. Maybe we hold it for a few years and we cut off that parcel for a little bit of parking in there, maybe we can take a strip on the long side so we can get from that parking lot to the library, maybe to, you know, a little walking path to go to it. Bottom line is, once you, once you acquire it, you control it, and then you can decide in the future, do we, do we not want it anymore? Or maybe at that one time, the CPA comes up with enough cash, and then, and you turn to the CPA and they say, yeah, we can cash now, okay? Well, then buy it from the town and preserve it as a historic site. There's a lot of options. The town's gotta be a little bit creative here, and they need to, first of all, let's start at the beginning, we need to value the history of the town. And if we don't do that, I guess, we're going, in my opinion, we're going on the wrong path. You know, that's, and it's a path of, in my, if you could see it every time around, ones that do, those are the towns that people desire, and they spend more in the process. You want to create a desirability in town, these are the things you have to value. So again, my opinion, not the opinion of the board, it's about the board of, of the planning board, my personal opinion, that the planning board will take a position on this one.
Anybody else have, yes?
Hi, I'm Tammy Hall. I live at Seven Briarwood, and to add to what Mader brought up, I just have a lot of concerns about safety with the library. The library, that corner there is a bus stop, and the library has teen events on Friday afternoons, and there are kids from the middle school that take the bus, that's not normally their bus, to go to those events. So there's kids that don't live in the neighborhood that go to the library from the buses from the middle school. So that's a lot of kids that don't live in the neighborhood that are in that area. So this is now, this happens, you know, right after school until, I don't know, four-thirty or something. So that's probably on a Friday afternoon, parents picking up kids from daycare might be picking them up around that time. So just, there's potential for accidents.
Emmy, yes?
It's Joe D'Arallamo. I live at Fifteen Sears Street as well. I think something to consider, kind of working off what Joe said and what Charlie said, the, the property may actually, parts of the property may actually be worth more than the whole property. So for instance, the single-family dwelling of that property, that's the highest and best use. So whether or not the property is thirty-three hundred square feet or twenty-three hundred square feet, I don't think it affects the value by all that much. People are still gonna live there because of the location. There's another ten thousand square feet way in the back that's barely usable is not gonna diminish the value of the property by all that much. So if we go ahead and purchase the property and we lop off the back end to annex the town hall parking lot, it's very likely that the town's gonna be able to sell the property for pretty close to what it paid for anyway, and really not come away very short based on taking away that piece of, piece of land. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Who's next? Yes?
I'm, I'm, I live at fourteen Sears Street. Just a different approach, possibly. I actually picked a word, put a lot of words, I meant no name. We took a strip between fifteen and seventeen Sears Street, say fifteen, twenty people, whatever we need. Could we put a emergency address or to the power plant? Could we put a, an emergency address for a, to the power pump behind town hall for our safety, uh, equipment, come out of the police station, fire station, if there was ever a need to get back behind Briarwood? Uh, because right now, there's, say, Fourth of July on, uh, common, people come in the parking lot both sides of the road, you can't pull a fire truck out back, you can't pull an emergency vehicle out back. That's where our pops are, two pumps of trucks. So, if you imagine, if you could open up, and then you have another squad, if you needed it, is that possibly something that maybe we could get on faster than a lot of these other things, for now anyway? Um, like I said, I absolutely hate the words of the domain, but in this case, I think it kind of works in our favor, so it's just a nice.
Yes?
Thanks, Chris. Uh, Lang State Day Camp, I live on fourteen Brown Avenue, not in the neighborhood, so, Chris, to your point, people around town do care about this. You know, it's not just the people around here. Uh, I'd also have to tell you, I'm a town meeting member, so I'm going to be asked to make some decisions in a couple of months. Seems to be that this situation is simply emblematic of a larger problem. I would encourage the, the board to think on Monday, uh, not only about this particular property, this can't be just a one-off, this is a much larger, more systemic problem. And I think you have to think about it in terms of public safety and the public aesthetic. Because if you make decisions, if we buy this property, just in this particular case, I don't know what the legal ramifications are, but if I were a developer, I'd say, hey, you're, you're picking on me. That's not fair, and it would have a very strong legal case. But if this decision was made in concert with a long-term plan stated by the board and by the town, we are concerned about public safety, we are concerned about the public aesthetic, as stated in this policy, you might be in a stronger position. It will certainly be a logical position, and I think we'd all get behind it, speaks to Joe's point. This is what we believe as a town, let's state it. So, I think just the turnout here tells you, there's a lot of thought behind it. Let's do this in a logical, consistent, and defendable way.
Thank you.
I'm Danny Tredco, I live on One Briarwood, just across from the library. So, you talk about traffic, I have my share of traffic with the library. I have a double driveway, and more than twice, I have my driveway blocked by the people in the library, but I can deal with this. My question is, this is a non-commercial lot, you say? Okay, I find that a daycare center is a business. Now, what is the difference between education and a daycare center? I mean, we have to know exactly, you know, your definition of what it is, and as far as I'm concerned, they are collecting money, that's business. People who are using their facility are paying, that's business. So, what is your explanation?
Um, I have no explanation. It has nothing to do with any sort of a local governing body. This is an issue, uh, that is an issue simply because of a state, uh, what would we call it, a law or a bylaw? The state, basically, in this particular case, if they determine that this business has some value, and I believe it's an educational value, if the state makes the determination that this business has an educational value, they are able to allow this potential property owner to supersede local zoning. Am I saying that properly, Joe?
It doesn't necessarily have to do with, you know, this religious and educational, and then there is daycares. My gut feeling is, historically, probably legislative was trying to legalize all these in-home daycares, so in their wisdom, they passed a law that said you can have a daycare or residential area, but they weren't foreseeing the fact that...
It's a by-revenue.
It's a by-revenue, so they weren't foreseeing the fact that you're not going to have commercial daycares, that if you can find a big enough lawn, you can throw it right in the middle of a neighborhood. Right? It's, so it's, there are religious, and there are certain exceptions from zoning, local zoning laws. One would be a religious and educational, and one is a daycare.
But the bottom line is, we have no ability to stop this if the state determines that this is the proper use for the property. That's, that's the explanation. I was going to take a shot at the planning board and say if they could stop it, believe me, they would, um, but I wouldn't do that. Uh, yeah. Um, no, in, in truth, um, this is something that, when we got the letter, uh, it's understandable that the planning board, which is, this is what they're tasked with, is determining if certain blocks fit into certain sized holes and certain shapes, and, uh, they believe basically unanimously with respect to who was at the meeting that night, that this is a bad fit for this area. As I asked a little while ago for somebody to raise their hand if they thought it was a good idea, nobody in the room, including the four guys behind me, think that it is. So, the issue here is that we have no ability to stop it because the state is able to... So, your question is, what happens if they sell the house to somebody else?
Yes, I mean, that...
That somebody else could theoretically turn around in a year and sell it to... I think the point that's being made here tonight is there are not many ways to prevent this happening now or in the future, so the sense I get from people is that we're talking about what could potentially be done to prevent this use of this property. I think everybody feels the same way, it's just a matter of how we can get there. Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, I'm Marsha McMakin, eighteen Briarwood Lane. You had asked for, you know, a reason why the whole town might be against this. Well, with sixty percent of Burlington being commercial, we really don't need, and forty percent being residential, we really don't need another commercial building, especially in such a nice area of town, being so close to the common and all of the town buildings. And so, Chris, to your point, you wanted to know, you know, basically, who else besides the residents in this area are interested? We had reached out to a bunch of people, and a lot of people couldn't make the meeting, so what would you like before Monday? What, you know, for, to hear from other people from the town? Like, you want them to email you? Do you want, you know, how can we get, you know?
So, let me give you my cellphone number. No. Uh, I have received, we have received, uh, a couple of emails, um, and I typed like this, so, no, in all seriousness, um, for me, this is what I personally need, is ideas and viewpoints, and the more places I get them from, and these guys are going to throw something at me, the more places I get them from, then the better informed I feel that I am. Uh, I can't, as you can imagine, every single email has been pretty much the same thing. Um, I don't think this should be here, traffic, safety, the same types of things that we're talking about. You can't in any way say to everybody, try to be creative and come up with something that hasn't been spoken before, so really, it's, it is what it is. People are going to send emails, and if we get a hundred of them, and two of them are good ideas, that are new perspectives, then, then that's, that's the way, uh, that's the way we become more informed. So, I, I don't have a plan as to, here's what I want to see or hear before Monday night. Um, I personally have heard enough ideas tonight, uh, to be able to process this, you know, in a sensible way, um, but really, it can't hurt to hear, like you said, from people in different places, which, you know, we're getting a little bit of that sense this evening. Um, I think for me, the way, some of the conversations I've had, um, somebody made the comment that, uh, how would you feel if this was next door to you? And that's kind of a good way to look at things sometimes when you're making a decision. How would I feel if the blue house next to me was in this situation, and, um, how would I feel if people were racing up and down my street? So, I would say to you that typically, that's a comment that you'll hear a lot, because we all live in a certain place, and many times you have to put yourself in, uh, in the situation that the person is speaking to you in. So, anyway, long story short, send emails, whatever, I'm not going to give my cellphone number out, and if you have it, don't share it, no. Um, just send ideas. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Okay. Um, going once, going twice. We did, yes. We did try to get this event catered, and that didn't pass, so...
Hi, I'm Peter Lewis, I live at one forty-four Wind Street. Um, you asked a good question, you said, well, give us more ideas, you know, why this should happen. And the ultimate decision, as you said, is town meeting. So, I would ask you to consider Monday night, why wouldn't you send it to town meeting? Simply that, is there any reason not to send it to town meeting and let the decision be made? By then, all the good ideas will come out.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? No? All right, well, yes?
Isn't this, I saw something on the Brooklyn Facebook page, this was Linda Lewis, Wind Street, Burlington. Um, this is a Sears catalog house? What, what, yeah?
Great opportunity to take a shot at the Burlington Facebook page. No, this is not, um, I don't think this ever had anything to do with a Sears catalog house. Built from a kit, okay. Built from a Sears catalog kit. I, okay. Okay. So, um, I'm happy to hand the mic to somebody else, I'm happy to send everybody home to their families. Um, yes?
Hi, Stephanie Gavin from eight Dearborn Road. I just want to remind you guys that the building nineteen fiasco is going to be having more people, and there's going to be restaurants and all that, so that's more traffic in our area. That's gonna, I mean, it's gonna clog everything. So, I really want you to think about that, and with the daycare going on, with the kids, it just doesn't match. Just want you to remember about that.
Anybody else? You, you referring to the inn, uh, the shops at Simon's Park, by the way? Not, uh... Yeah. I'm just trying to have a little fun with you, I'm sorry about that. So, uh, questions? Comments? I think that's it. Um, I'm going to hang around, some of the other guys might hang around as well, so if anybody's not comfortable speaking in a crowd, I'll, I'll hang around for a little bit, and thank you for coming.